All right, we're live.
Thanks.
Good on.
We're out.
Good evening. Welcome to the 5:00 PM. January 25th. Board of Trustees Work Session of Village of Mary. I need a motion to open this meeting.
So move.
Back in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. As is our want these days, we're going to move directly into Vice Counsel Executive Session. First item on Vice Counsel. Never ending saga of 130d Avenue. An executive session. Goldstein versus Village of Mary. It is anticipated that a motion will be offered into Executive Session pursuant to 1051d of the New York State Public Officers Law as is related to matters of pending litigation. Second matter is Hampshire Country Club LLC. It is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into Executive Session pursuant to 105d of the New York State Public Officers Law as it is related to ongoing, to matters of ongoing litigation. I will make that motion.
Before, before you make the motion, I think we need two additions. That 130 Beach Avenue will also be an executive session because we can't vote on it and or discuss it. We can ask the council and get their advice, but we can't discuss it and advise the council. We have to go to Executive Session. And I'd like a follow up regarding the email issue that was discussed in Executive, Vice Counsel, Executive Session last, at our last meeting.
What was that email issue, Dan?
It had to do with inappropriate emails potentially to staff.
I would. Am I amending the motion?
I mean, I, I would move to amend the motion. And I think we had the second matter we discussed with Labor Council, so um. I think we should discuss it, but we don't have Labor Council with us. But I would amend the motion because I'm not sure we were properly in Executive Session two weeks ago. And I think we just want to make sure we. Do this properly.
I, I think last, I agree with.
About whether or not we were properly in Executive Session here, an open, open session. We should probably listen to what the attorney says.
Okay.
In Executive Session before we say things that would hurt the village out here. So.
Nora's moved to, I'll second it.
Okay, this is to put 130 Beach Avenue also on Executive Session.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and the emails, yeah.
No, she didn't move for the emails.
I did, I said, I just think that the converse, I did move for both, but I think the conversation involves somebody who may not be here. So we should discuss it and figure out how to handle it.
I'm in the middle of a meeting now, can we talk tomorrow?
I think if this was something that dealt with Labor Council, it should, we should wait until Labor Council is with us. I mean, I don't have a problem discussing 130 Beach in Executive Session. I'm not sure I'm completely clear on what the email issue is. If, if my guess is correct, then we need Labor Council here.
So maybe we should postpone that for two weeks and have Labor Council.
That, that's what I'm guessing, but I'm not exactly clear.
Okay, so I will amend the motion to have, just to have 130 Beach Avenue be discussed, not only in Vice of Counsel, but also an executive session under 1051d.
To the extent you need a second, I'll second that.
That'll be cool. Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Hedges?
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Let's see, in Executive Session.
Yeah.
Okay, so I want.
Hey, Dan.
Hey, Kelly.
Are they out of executive session?
Yeah, we just finished up.
Great.
Okay, can you hear me there?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Kayla, I'll let you know the one thing I told everyone else on the board. Because of this feedback issue, if you want, you can put yourself on mute. And when you want to speak, just press the space bar and it will unmute you.
Will do. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay. We've gone out of executive session. In executive session, there was a vote, more accurately described as a re-vote, of the matter of 130 Beach Avenue with, I made a motion which was seconded by Kelly Winstrup to proceed with an enforcement action against Mr. Stuart Teager of 130 Beach Avenue. And the vote was three to two against. So that being said, let's go on to a regular agenda.
Tom, I just want to make clear that I recused from the Hampshire discussion and did not participate. I left the meeting at that point.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to break at 7:15. First item on the agenda is a full-time village attorney. What this is, is that the Village of Merrick would engage the services of an attorney who worked for the Village of Merrick, who was an employee of the Village of Merrick. We did this in 2007 when we got the mayoral chair. This is something that I fought for as a trustee. I put together a committee of three prominent lawyers, Mr. Millstein, Mr. Romans, and Mr. Ryder. Mr. Romans unfortunately has gone and he's abstained in memory, but Mr. Millstone and Mr. Ryder are still common attorneys. And I would ask anybody that cares about litigation of those American, how we handle our our representation to look at it. There are two things. I came up with an advertisement, which is how we went about it in 2007. We placed an advertisement in the New York Law Journal and in a couple of other publications that lawyers would frequent. And we had a bunch of applicants and we went through the process of interviewing those applicants. My proposed ad is in the agenda here. Trustee Natchez shared a, what'd you call it, request for interest?
Yes, it can be an ad. It can be however you wish to, whatever you want to phrase it.
Well, I think the, you know, we're we're going to be asking for someone to fill a position that we're going to create, right?
Right.
So we have to, you know, after we have the candidate, we have to create the position.
Well, Tom, that's true, but you need to tell the people that you're asking to, you know, be, to say whether they're interested or not, to give them some, a little bit more information as to what is, you know, what is going to be expected and what their duties are.
Yes, and I will, I will read the ad I came up with because I think it covers that and we can talk about it. Appointed by and reporting directly to the village board, the village attorney is a village chief legal officer. Seven to 10 years of experience, the majority of which should have been in the practice of New York State municipal law, and jurist doctor degrees are required. Candidates licensed, active, and even standing with the New York State, with New York State. The annual salary range for this position is, and I left that blank, depending upon the qualifications and experience of the selected candidate. Comprehensive benefits are also available. The village attorney reports to the mayor and board of trustees. The primary function of this position is to provide legal advice and counsel to the village public. Officials, management, and employees of major departmental issues and projects to assist decision makers, legal implications of decisions. This position will work closely with the village manager and the village departments, including providing legal advice with regard to municipal contracts, RFPs, bids, litigations, foils, permits, tax certuaries, human resources, law enforcement, building regulations, real property, code enforcement, and developing engineering and environmental regulatory compliance and and compliance by the Village of Merrick with all applicable local, state, and federal laws and regulations, and developing all governmental agreements and shared services. The Village of Merrick is accepting applications for a full-time position of village attorney, and it goes on like that. So that was my idea of how to place an ad. Is there anything that is lacking?
I, doesn't, I think there's things that are within the expression of that are detailed, that is important. that are detailed, that is important for them to understand. The board, you know, they're counseled to what they are counseled to, what they are not counseled to, et cetera. I'm also not sure that I would put the the years in there. I think we have to look at, you know, everybody in relation to whatever they had, what their backgrounds are and who's best for us.
Well, I think it's important that we not just, if we don't put people's qualifications and experience, we're gonna have people, you know, we're gonna have dozens of people right out of law school that were gonna be applying.
I have no problems with asking for their experience and their qualifications, and I think that's important.
I think you want to have somebody, you know, you want to have a pool of people that have the ability to do the job. Kelly?
Um, on that matter, I don't think I've ever seen a an ad for a legal job that doesn't say the number of years' experience that they're looking for. I just don't think I've ever seen that. Tom, I do think that in your description, while it's very comprehensive, I'm missing the part where they would draft legislation for us. So I just think that needs to be added, that they would draft proposed legislation for adoption by the board. Thank you. I'm muted.
Okay.
I see something.
That is a good point.
I think we should actually work with both, because you need an ad that goes to the, not just the journal, which actually charges you by the word. So we have to be careful, right, Bob? And it's expensive, really. It's expensive. And also, the bar associations, where we would like to put it, they, they don't want to have such a long advertising. So and on the other, on the other side, of course, you can cross-reference and say, for more information, see the request for proposals or however you want to, well, for expression of interest in the village website and link to it, where you could have more, the more details and put it on a, in a place on our website. So you could work, you could connect both, save money, be more focused on the, on the ad itself, so we can go in the Law Journal and other places, and it can circulate, and, and I think we accomplished the same goal. So I won't get into the nuts and balls. We can clean that just as, as you, as you put it forward. I don't think we need to just craft it here in the executive session.
We're not in executive session.
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, in work session.
You're willing to work on it with me to do the editing. So we're not hurrying it up, and we can get it done.
Yep.
Is that okay with the rest of the board? Me and Victor edited down? Nora, I think you're trying to talk, but I can't hear you. Is everybody trying to talk?
Nora, can you hear us? Nora?
We can't hear you, Nora.
We can't hear you.
All right, Kelly has a hit. We'll go back to Nora. Kelly? You're muted.
I'm, I'm sorry. I was just holding my ear to hear better. I do think Victor's idea of putting, you know, a reference to the village website or a link for people is a good one. That would be a great thing to do.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can, Nora.
So I thought that Tom's draft, it looked like three different drafts, so I edited it. So let me just send everybody, I'll work on it a little bit with the conversation tonight, and they'll send it as a draft of the three ads. I didn't do much to the, to the expression of interest, but I tried to sort of combine them mindful that we pay by the word.
Okay, so why don't we do this? Victor and Tom can massage the ad, reduce it as much as possible, and link it to, you know, an expression of interest that would be on the website.
Okay, and let's look at the expression.
Does anybody have an objection to that? I think that's what you proposed, Tom.
Yes.
Is that fine with everybody?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make another brief comment on this, this letter. This letter, what I'm referring to, the Milstein-Romas writer. I think it's 2006, and it's so relevant today. It has the two pieces. One is the in-house village attorney, and the other is managing litigation. I think they are very, very good. It's a very good outline of how you should go about it, I think, which you adopted as, as our policy. For example, it requires a quarterly review of where you have your cases, your caseload and your budget along with it and your strategy. It does, I think it's very relevant and maybe for next, next session, we can just just incorporate what's here into a policy, very simple, one page, but it'll keep us organized.
I think we might have done that in 2007, when we got control of the board.
If you go to the website, there's, and the village attorney, there's something, but it's very simple and it doesn't, it's not comprehensive enough.
Because we used to do it. We used to get, you know, in the last couple of years I was on the board, we were getting those updates, we were getting those prognoses, we did all that. And then, you know, the mayoral situation changed, I guess, they went a different path. So yeah, I agree with that. Just a quick story. When they were writing that, the three attorneys, we were at Mr. Milstein's house. He said to Mr. Ryder, "All right, Eric, you begin the first draft, then you send it to me and John, and we'll edit it, and then we'll send it to Murphy, and Murphy can edit it." And I started laughing. And I said, "You know I'm gonna edit it, just so I can say, Milstein screwed this up, and I had to fix it before I sent it in to you guys." Which, if you gotta know Ira Milstein, it was a funny thing at the time. Yeah, I had to be there, I guess. All right, so it looks like we have a path.
Well, just one more thing, Tom, if we can. I'd like to try and set some timetables. I don't think we have to wait two weeks back to the board with it. I think we can empower both of you to agree on something and get it out. And I think we should have a return date. It's, we're basically at the end of January. So it either should be the end of February or beginning, or the, or by mid-March. I don't really care which, but we need to move fairly quickly.
But we meet on February 1st. Let's just look at it on February 1st.
We have an extra meeting, right? Oh. We have an extra meeting.
You know, we could, this isn't something that has to be voted on. You delegated it to, you know, we'll send the final draft out, and that'll be that. You can, you know, say, "I don't like this, I don't like that." Fair enough?
Thank you. Thank you both.
Yeah, I didn't have anything else to do.
Thank you all.
You know, I do want to echo the thanks. To Dan's point, I do think it makes sense to ask for submissions by a certain date, and maybe, you know, February 1st would be a good date to put in there. We don't want late submissions to screw.
No, March 1st, March 1st. I'm sorry, March 1st. That's right.
I think what also something Victor and I should do before we finalize this, is talk to staff, and make sure that we have in there what staff thinks that they need.
Yes.
I don't want to, you know, have, you know, come out with, you know, and then staff says, "Yeah, but we need them to do A, B, and C," and, you know. So I think that's the discussion we should have with Orgy and the police chief and Jerry Barbario, you know, the people who access the legal service of the moment.
Absolutely. Absolutely, Mayor. We're not gonna do this in a vacuum. Yes, sure.
All right, fine. All right. And the, all right, the police reform, the intervention committee, that is something Jerry was gonna present tonight. Jerry's not here. We're gonna have, you know, this was put on the agenda before we talked about having a special meeting. We're having a special meeting February 1st, I think at 5:00 PM. Is that correct?
Yes.
At 5:00 PM.
5:15.
5:15, okay, 5:15, to discuss this with the board. I can tell you that many and several committees all work very hard. These are not easy issues. They, it brought up a lot of things that, you know, were good discussions and a lot of things that were hard discussions. But we're gonna grow. We can't shy away from hard discussions. So I think we wait until February 1st to have an update from the village manager, and hopefully there'll be more complete information. I think, because I think the reform committee, a couple of them are working on more stuff. New emails also today. So.
Tom, if I may, Sally, if you can make sure that the notice is sent out for the full-time village attorney place, whatever, for February 1st at 5:15.
Sally?
Yes.
Put this one out for the February 1st, 5:15 meeting?
I believe it has, yes, on the calendar with the, with the Zoom. If not, it will be done tomorrow.
Okay, fine.
No, I understand, but it needs to be updated because we now have two items on the agenda. We have the full-time village attorney.
Oh, Dan, we, 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 we said that we were gonna not put that on the agenda, that we were just gonna deal with it and get it out before then.
Well, that's fine.
Okay.
But it also doesn't matter, Dan, as long as we notice the meeting.
Okay.
Yes, Victor?
On the police reform, I, I've been watching, and I know how much work is coming, is going in here. But I did, and I haven't seen emails today, I'm sorry, but what, what was, what we received, or was in the package, were some of the recommendations. I think the the order requires a plan to be, to be posted probably by now or by the time we get to discuss it. So that's where I want to convey, so then you convey to Jerry that, you know, or to clarify, if we're gonna have another document being posted for next Monday as a plan, not just a recommendation, or if he thinks the recommendations are the plan, then just to make that clear. But but as I read the executive order, it is, it has, and actually, the outline includes more, more than the recommendations, which are probably most difficult issues, but, but the plan has to be, I think, more comprehensive than that. So I want, of course, he's not here today with us today, but can that be conveyed so we don't miss the opportunity to start the right, in, you know, the right track on Monday when we really address this issue, because the time is very, very, very short.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, establishing a fee for stormwater pollution prevention plans. We've talked about this. Where are we? Again, you want to talk about this for a second? Donovan? You're muted, Dan. Hit the spacebar. Dan, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I think I tricked myself somehow. We spoke about this at the last meeting. You asked me to come back to the village board with a recommendation on the fee. Yeah, I provided a staff memo, which talked about the language and the code. It does allow for the village to recoup fees associated with the, with the SWIP review. I reached out to our consulting engineer to try and gauge the average amount of time spent on these reviews. For the simple ones, which is the majority of them, it's about four to five hours. The more complex ones that may call in to play the DEC regulations, which go above and beyond the village regulations, that could be anywhere from a day to a day and a half. So for a four-hour review, I'm proposing that we set a fee, a baseline fee of $750. If additional time is needed, the code allows us to recoup that cost. And then the same type of schedule for the more complex review, which is $1,500 plus as a baseline with additional expenses that can be reimbursed back to the village.
And a question or clarification? You just said 750 in the paperwork.
Oh, sorry, 725.
25.
Yeah, it's 725. I apologize.
Okay, but I don't see here how you would incorporate additional time and how that's based. Are you saying 725 up to four hours?
No, it's every, they're all gonna.
You can't be nebulous. You've got to have, you have to be very specific about this. You just can't leave it open-ended.
Well, the, the code says, the Village of Merrick may require any person undertaking land development reasonable, reasonable cost at prevailing wages, prevailing rates for review. You know, the reasonable costs are gonna be whatever's charged to us by the engineer. So it will vary per application, but I'm sure we could, you know, prepare the proper language.
Okay, so let's. Can we stop for, go back to 725? How much do we pay the consulting engineer?
I think it's something like $188 an hour. It's less than $200 an hour. I know that. So I basically got up to 720 to 725 for a four-hour review. But we could also.
That, that would come out to 752 if it's four hours. Some will be more, some will be less.
Yeah.
So I think I think you have to, i- if you want to try and do that, you can't leave it nebulous. Because if you're establishing a fee for, you know, for a review, then you either have to say that up to so many, so much time spent would be X dollars, and on that will be, you know, on the clock or something like that. But you just can't say 725. If you think we need to charge more, we will.
Okay, I'm perfectly, I think we just want to establish a rational, understandable method for collecting a fee. So whatever the, you know, the board would like to see is a mechanism, that's, that's the important part.
Should it be just a per-hour thing?
Or can I make a suggestion there? Maybe for the small ones, you want to set a fixed fee, even if it's not 100% accurate, because you're gonna wind up spending more time fighting over what the amount is than what's a reasonable amount. Then you are, you know, then you're gonna gain or lose by setting a fixed fee based on the average. Kelly's head or hand up?
I was just gonna suggest that we say something like, maybe on the small ones, we say the fee is $750, and then on the larger ones, it's $1,500, which includes up to four hours of work and an additional rate of $190 per hour for additional work beyond the four hours. Something like that.
I think that, oh, sorry.
I just, I didn't want to tie it to the consulting engineer, because, you know, we hope that someday we will have a village engineer.
I understand, and I think that's a good point, but following up on that point, for, you have to do a SWPPP, if you will, for disturbances of, you know, under, under 1,000 square feet as well, but it's a letter. It's not a full-blown, you know, a report. According to this, we would be charging them seven, you know, 50, 750, 725, whatever. I think that that, that for disturbances under, under, up to 1,000 square feet, there should be no fee. And then above that, for, you know, 725 or 750 for up to four, you know, four hours and, you know, and thereafter, whatever, plus any out-of-pocket expenses for modeling. Because when you start to model, that starts, that's more than just your time. There's, there is a, there's an additional cost in that, and they may, it may be in-house, it may be outhouse.
I think we have to at least establish a baseline fee, because when we get I I think we have to at least establish a baseline fee, because when we get the application, we've got to tell the person what the baseline fee is to start collecting.
I understand.
Yeah. The one item with trustee One Strip's suggestion, the reason we set a higher rate for the more complex ones, because we know they're going to take more time. It was a, I think, the, like I said, the engineer said anywhere from a day to a day and a half. So I I figured the fifteen hundred based on eight hours.
Okay, so so we could change it accordingly.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I do think that Bob's right. On a small one, you don't want to get in in arguments with small situations. I think it probably just makes more sense to cap it and be done.
Okay.
That's my my view.
But I also don't want to discourage people for mi- for minor activities, which is under a thousand square feet by code. I I think that, you know, putting a fee on that discourages somebody to take a minor improvement project and say, you know, heck with it, you know, I don't need this aggravation.
I I agree with that, Dan.
Okay. So I that basically it's it's, I don't want to say triple tier, but it's under a thousand, no charge, a thousand to, you know, what do you call an acre? When the DEC comes in, it's the seven fifty. And then when it's the very large one, which is going to be the DEC regulations, that's where we charge the the fifteen hundred plus the any additional time spent by the engineer.
Yeah, I think you've got to come back with some very specific language that addresses that. And, you know, I think those are the guidelines that would work.
Okay.
So fifteen hundred, we cover the the hourly rate for the engineer up until we exhaust the fifteen hundred?
Correct.
So so I think you would say, though, if you don't want to change this every time the hourly rate changes or every time, or if we hire a village engineer. So you just say fifteen hundred dollars, you know, up to eight hours of time.
Yeah, plus a third-party review fee.
So Kelly, that would be in the fee schedule, which you look at it year-on-year.
Okay.
You could review when you.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, I'm sorry.
Yes, trustee two-four.
I was gonna say, so this is kind of a combination of the fees in Rye with the ones in the town. And more or less.
Yeah, and because I wanted it to accurately reflect what we're paying for the third-party review. I wanted to, you know, speak to the engineer, kind of get a understanding of how much time they're spending. Because I think, you know, what I, one of the things I've seen from the board is you'd like us to see if we coop our costs, not not subsidize the costs for some of these developments.
We're still more or less, because I think Maranick, Maranick, our town is a little lower, but it's, they're very old. They're they're they were, they're out of date, and Rye is more recent, a little higher, so we're kind of in the middle, right?
Yeah, and I think, you know, the town of Maranick has an in-house engineer, Mr. Wasp. I believe Rye has an in-house engineer. So, you know, there are there are differences, you know, we, as I said, we don't have an in-house engineer. You know, we're paying our hourly rate to our consulting engineers. So I want to, I wanted to put the village in a position where the fee that was assessed is accurate in reflection of what we're actually paying.
What about the fire inspection?
I I will come back next meeting on that one. It's, like I said, being in the office two days a week and having the fire inspector not there all the time. It's it's tough to get some of these this stuff done.
Okay, so we continue this in two weeks?
I will come back with a resolution for the stormwater fee in two weeks. And I'll put up back on the work session, the fire inspection fees with the recommendation.
Okay. All right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is one D, establishing a permitted off-street parking lot.
Yeah.
This is where we've been mapped the end of Old White Plains Road, where the butts St. Vito's and where it dead ends on the I ninety-five wall. It was used basically for parking. We want to make it an official village parking lot to both, you know, give control, clarity to the community and revenue to the people of the village of Maranick. So Jerry is asking us, you know, do we have a desire to do that? And I think I think we've talked about this before. And that, you know, that was the whole purpose of demapping, was to do this. So he was, I guess, he's prepared a draft of a law, which I'm sure he'll share with the attorney's office eventually. But I think he's he's asking us here, what type of permit should be issued? And and I think that's a moot point now, because there's only two types of permits that are going to be issued in the village of Maranick from now on. If we pass this law tonight, there's going to be a railroad permit and there's going to be the general parking permit. So this would be a general parking permit. And, you know, that's also a price that we're going to set tonight. So I I don't know how much discussion you want to have about it, but I I think that that was the intent when we de-mapped the street. Jerry suggests is that we name it the St. Vito's Lot, which kind of would make sense. But we should probably run that by St. Vito's before we do it.
Yes.
We'll make it valid even better than the St. Vito's. See if that's okay with them.
I I have a couple of questions, Tom. The proposal is to make this a permit for overnight parking only. What is that?
Well, it it there will not not be any more overnight parking room. If we pass the law tonight, there's just general park and railroad park. Those will be the only two parking permits in the village of Maranick. When when Jerry sent this out, it was before we had made that change, which we're going to make tonight. So this will just be a general parking permit, because after tonight, hopefully, we we pass that law, there's going to be two permits in the village of Maranick, general permit and railroad.
So the general permit is for twenty-four hours?
Yes. It's going to be all over the.
Is the general permit required on Sunday as well or not?
Yes.
I don't think we typically enforce the permit requirements on Sundays. So, you know, if people were driving to church, we we could, you know, allow it, but.
So how? Sally, do you know how, remember how it's proposed in the law change?
We're just changing the permit types. The days and weeks are remaining the same. And they're just Monday through Saturday. There's no permit parking enforced on Sundays.
Okay.
Kelly?
I actually don't think it should be called the St. Vito's Lot. It's a public governmental lot, and I don't think it should be named after a church. I just think that's, I think that's.
How about this, how about this throughway law?
We could find a better place name.
So what was the original, wasn't that originally?
Strawberry.
Strawberry.
Before the, before the throughway took it over, do you recall the name of the street, Nora?
The White Plains.
I can look on a map. I will do that.
It's Old White Plains Road.
No, I might, we'll figure it out.
Okay, all right, yeah, but I I guess the the question here is, do we want to pursue that as a bargain? And 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 I'm not, Kelly, you you do?
I I do.
Yeah. Anybody not want to pursue that as a bargain? Okay. Then that is a decision.
But I agree with Kelly. I don't think it should be saying Vito's name on it. I think we need to come up with a better, you know, better identification.
Okay, we we don't have to do that tonight. The question really was tonight.
No, I understand.
All right, the next item on the agenda is an item on the agenda that I brought up before, but I want to rediscuss it, because I want to take out the whole part that we were talking about, setting an hourly rate. And I want to talk about this just in terms of if someone is indemnified, they have a retainer agreement with an attorney, and we are expected to pay that retainer agreement, we should have to approve that retainer agreement. Right now, there's absolutely no control over these costs. And I think if the controller knew that we were doing this, i- i- it would be a red flag. We have, you know, we have a cost that ran up in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for an ethics case. Now, it, believe me, there are indigent defenders, the defendants or convicts on death row who wish they had a fraction of that spent on their defense, a fraction of that. So I I don't think in good conscience, we can, you know, keep paying stuff like this unless we approve the retainer agreement. I mean, I I don't know how, you know, as a board, then the taxpayers' money would abandon without having any control. Kelly, you got your hand up?
I do. Um, I think that, you know, in general, we vote as a board whether to indemnify, like, we have to decide whether it's a proceeding. And so it seems like we we could just approve this at the time it comes before us. Bob's Bob's shaking his head, though.
No, it's a matter of law. It's not, it's not a decision that the board makes. The board's already made the decision years ago by passing the local law. It says anytime a an official is the subject of a disciplinary proceeding, that the village will for the cost of the defense. So it doesn't come to the board for a vote.
Right, but that that doesn't mean that, you know, that's caught, that we necessarily abandoned our fiduciary responsibility and people are à carte blanche. I think this is very, very important.
Yeah.
The financial stability of the community.
Um.
All I'm saying, if 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 you engage an attorney, the board trustees have to approve the retainer agreement.
I I I don't know that it's appropriate to to get involved with an agreement between an attorney and his or her client. I I'm not sure that that's that's.
If we're paying the bill, it is.
I'm I'm.
You're not, you you wouldn't be, the attorney, the client could pay whatever they wanted to pay. You'd be capping what, just saying the bill is all the way back to X. After that, you're on your own.
But we don't need to see the agreement to do that. I mean, I'm just saying, I don't, would you, I mean, if you had, would your clients be comfortable showing an agreement you had with them to somebody else?
I don't think you need to. I don't think, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think anybody, the mayor suggested, like, you have to see the agreement. I think if you want to say, we're not paying more than X.
Well, then, then that has nothing to do with looking at individual agreements.
Well, then, but Nora, are are you really saying that we have no responsibility over that money?
No, I'm just saying, I don't think it's appropriate to ask somebody to provide a a business agreement they have with their lawyer. That's all. I don't, I mean, that I think that was, that you introduced a new, a new idea.
Well, i- i- if if you're asking the taxpayers to put the bill, I think that they're they have a right to have us make a decision about whether that's reasonable.
I'm, I'm just not sure that you have, that you can, I'm not sure it's appropriate to ask for information between a client and his or her attorney.
Then they they don't have to be indemnified.
I I, Tom, this is a, this is like, you're introducing a whole new idea to this. I'm not sure that anybody wants to, anybody would want to share the agreement that they have with an attorney. I'm not, I'm just, that's like, we have to figure out whether that's even reasonable. Bob said that that wasn't needed.
Well, what Bob's saying is, but Bob's not saying that we shouldn't control the cost. We have no way of controlling the cost, absolutely no way.
I know, and I've said that, you know, once we, you know, once we, I mean, I have said that I'm really want, we we've discussed this before, we've tabled it before. I think we should be discussing this once we've done all of the ethics reforms. This has happened once in the village, and I think we need to do a holistic review. And that's been my position all the way through.
This is not something that the ad hoc committee is looking at.
No, I'm I'm, I know that.
So it it's the two separate parts of the law. Right now, we're at a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And, you know, there's there's no, I I feel shocked and awed by that number. And I think that a lot of people in the community do it too.
Well, and I feel shocked and awed by the fact it's spent, we've spent so much money because we had to hire different attorneys because of this. This has been a big, we have, the village board has spent money too, because we had a situation where there was another board that was able to conduct an investigation and that there was, we didn't, there was no fiscal, there were no fiscal responses, there was no fiscal control there either. So I think we need a more holistic approach.
That's that's totally not true, and I'm sorry, it's actually untrue. It it cost us nothing to have them do their investigation. It was part of Bob's retainer agreement. They did not spend a dime.
Well, but we need to hire, we needed to hire another lawyer. We needed to hire another lawyer because.
Need to hire. We did not need to hire. The board decided it wanted to hire.
Well, because Bob had a conflict because and couldn't represent us.
No, that's what this board decided. Bob didn't decide that. And and that's the truth. So, you know.
Let's clarify that.
To spend the money. The board decided to file a separate answer.
We had to hire a separate lawyer for you to conduct the hearing, because Bob couldn't do both.
And that part is true, but that's not what the board, that's not what you were talking about. You were talking.
Yes, that's what, yes, Tom, that's what I was talking about. We had, we had we had to hire a different attorney so that you could conduct the hearing and so that we could get the record.
But the the question out there is, do you want to have control over these costs or not? Because I'm I'm going to write the controller and ask him for an opinion.
Okay.
Victor and Kelly raising their hands.
Victor, go ahead.
Let me go first.
Well, well, I guess what I was going to ask is, do we as a board want to cap this in some way? Do, and 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 that's just a fun, I mean, whether we do it by setting a dollar amount or approval of the board. I just want a sense of whether there is an agreement to move forward on whether to try to cap it. I mean, I feel strongly that we should try to cap it and that we should then discuss how to cap it. But I'd like to know how other people feel. I I I feel the same way that I felt when it came up, I don't know, eight months ago. I don't remember the first time it came up. And that we need to discuss this entire issue in conjunction with the other reforms and changes to our ethics code, because this has only happened once, and it's happened regarding an ethics decision. Well, actually, it's happened a couple of times regarding the ethics decision. So I think there's, 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 there's more to be said here. And I have said, I think that we should postpone this conversation until after this situation is resolved and that we have a discussion about this and other aspects of how we manage costs. And I, you know, we we've we've tabled it. I mean, Tom's brought it back up, but we've had this conversation before. So that's where I stand. I think we need, I think, I think absolutely we should discuss it, but we should discuss it with a bunch of other reforms and evaluations.
Victor?
So I think it needs to clarify, we need to clarify that the fees that we would charge, the the rate, rate of the fee that was charged by by the lawyer for 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 the indemnified party, Mrs. Goldstein, just to put me, was, I think, reasonable, unless somebody disagrees with me. Three hundred, I think, I think it started three hundred and fifty, it's four hundred dollars.
I I.
When the board, let me finish.
Okay.
So so the fee, let's, it's two parts to it. One part, the fee or the the amount is 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 a combination of three things. The fee itself, the time, the time that that's spent in the board. The board does get to see those those bills. The fee was reasonable. Did control the cost because we checked and said that nothing that was billed to us was wrong. We confirmed this the other day, and we had Augie and our treasurer look at this, so that every bill. Victor, you're on mute. I got muted by the by the by the by the host. Maybe I got a note muted by the host. Maybe it was a mistake, but.
I tried to fix it, and that's when he got the note.
No, I was asking you to unmute.
Okay, thank you, sir. But, okay, so anyway, the point is, the fees, both for the attorney of Miss Goldstein and our attorneys, were, I think, reasonable. Does somebody disagree with? Does somebody disagree with that? Okay, the fees are reasonable. They are, they're, they're, they're standard in this area. Number two, the amount of work, we, we checked it. So every bill that we came here, we, we had to look at it or we had the opportunity to look at it and we voted in the abstract. We made sure that nothing was wrong. So number two. Number three, then, the issue is, is that whether the fee, whether, whether this is, you know, as, as Bob explained, the fees have to be reasonable. If somebody would come up with unreasonable fees, we, we, we have a legitimate reason why not to pay, not to pay that, that bill. But more important, really, this, 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 this goes to the legislative, if I go, you go to the legislative history of this. It was passed, the first time it was in 1980 when the indemnification was passed. Mayor Oppenheimer was the mayor. Then it was expanded to volunteers on April 28th. Uh, I'm sorry, in 80, in 80s. Give me one second. Yeah, in 78, actually, in the 70, in 78s and the 80s, it was both done. Then they expanded it. And, and since then, this has never been, been a problem. The root cause of this is more complicated than, than, than the fee itself, which is not the problem here. And that's something the board is working on. So I, 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 I don't see getting into a new law and discussion on this one.
Okay.
And, and I think some of the issues that were in that article from the law hood, I think, have been clarified here. And I don't want to go into more debate about it. But, but fortunately, it was clarified, there were some things there that were not correct, including the issues that, that some of the fees that have been incurred were legitimate because they were, because we had to hire an attorney and because the mayor had, had, had to conduct the hearing and because it took so long because of the pandemic, right?
Okay, uh, you, you, you asked a question.
I have not asked any question.
No, you did.
No, I did not. No questions. It was, it was a statement.
No, Victor, you said, I don't think anybody thinks that the fees were unreasonable. Okay, you're talking the, the, the dollar per hour.
Correct.
Okay, I'm not. I'm talking about the total hours billed, billed. There was 360 hours billed to get you to that $143,000, which I think is excessive. I, I think that there were motions made that ran up the cost. I think at one point, they tried to bill us for the Article 78 and I caught it. And that was knocked off. But that was originally sent in. The, the work on the Article 78 was originally sent in for us to be paid. That's why people have been asking questions about it and, and we, we, we refused to pay it. So I think that, you know, there's a lot of ways to, to, to make money in the legal profession and it's not just the per hour. And I, I will stand by that. I said it before and I will say it again. I think that we were charged too much per hour, not per hour, but per, uh, the work done. You look at what Adam charged a similar amount, Adam Stollerow. But, you know, we, we, we didn't get the kind of bill from Adam Stollerow that we got from the other side. And we had no control over it, even if we disagreed with it. In essence, we had to pay it. That's my point. The only thing that we didn't pay was them trying to charge us for the Article 78, which frankly was outrageous.
May I say, may I, we, we, you, the bills were in front of us. If you had any objection, you should have raised it and tell us, tell us. I, I think it's a very serious allegation, what you're saying, but I'm not going to get into it. I, I, I think we did our part, I did our part of looking at the bills and I, I didn't see, if I had seen anything that was not proper, I would have raised it.
Now, I made the allegation then and I'm making the allegation now that we would be in charge too much. I said it at the time. I said it at the time and I'm saying it now. I'm consistent. And the, the, the fact that they tried to charge us for an Article 78, you know, shows to me bad intent. And I'm sorry, that, that's the way I feel and I stand by it, but that is not the issue in front of us. The issue in front of us is how to control this in the future.
Yeah, we addressed the root cause of it, I think. That's the main way of doing it.
I, 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 I see no, you know, change in how to control this in the future. And it's, it, it's a very, very important issue. You know, and we talk about, we, you know, we argue dollars and cents here and, you know, how to, how to have the clerk of treasurers office present us with reconciliation of, uh, you know, stuff going forward, which is good. But then we don't have, we have no control here. Yeah, look, I'll, I'll ask the, I'll write to the controller and ask his opinion. Because I think that this is really important.
But does Dan have a view on this? I mean, I know Nora, I know in Victor field. Dan, do you think that we need to address this?
I think it needs to be addressed in the overall context of the entire ethics code. The reason the, the fees were so high has to do with how the village controlled their meetings. Okay, was not, it was not the defendant.
But the code we're trying to change.
It was, no, it was the committee. Okay, let me finish, Kelly. It was the committee that decided on an approach and it took whatever it took. I think the issue, there are lots of issues that need to be ironed out and straightened out. You know, in terms of capping fees, I'm not sure you can, that, that, that is the appropriate approach. I think there are other approaches that probably are much more significant that will, that will end up accomplishing what we're trying to do. But there, there are very significant issues that I know that the committee is trying to deal with and trying to figure out how to make, you know, meaningful suggested changes and reforms. And I think that's where we need to, uh, you know, concentrate our energies. But I do agree that doing it piecemeal is not the right approach and at this time is not the right approach.
I, I just want to point out that the law we're looking to change has, is not limited to ethics hearings. This isn't an ethics limited issue.
And I, I'd also like to point out, just as, you know, for clarity and as a point of fact, is that the ad hoc committee is not looking at this aspect because this isn't in the ethics code. The indemnification is not in the ethics code. They are not looking at that. This is a board of trustees' decision. All right, it, it does not.
So I, I understand the ethics code is not, the ad hoc ethics code review committee is not looking at fees. That isn't the point. Victor makes a good point. This has been a law in, 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 in our village for 33 years and this has only come up once now. And I think there, I think the root cause is something that is being addressed. And I think at that point, we need, then we will evaluate everything together. But I think we really need to put these things together, which is what I've been saying for, I guess, since last spring or summer when we first discussed it. So this is, this, this occasion, this, this circumstance has happened once in 33 years.
No, it, it happened with trustee Santoro a few years ago.
But you, I mean, I don't, but it, it, it did happen once with trustee Santoro, but nobody complained about the amount then. So, um, in any of that, I, 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 you know, I, I think we are all concerned about, about what happened with this matter. We're all concerned about the expense for the village on all sides. And I think instead of a piecemeal approach, we need to do a more holistic approach. So I agree with Victor and Dan. And I thank Victor for looking up that research.
Just, just, just to clarify, wasn't the indemnification passed in, in, for, for these hearings to pay for the attorney in the review passed, if the trustee Santoro's hearing?
That's correct. The law was amended in 2017 to allow for the payment of, to require the payment of defense costs for administrative proceedings.
Right, so, so this, this wasn't, you know, something that happened under SUSE.
Well, it.
Let me, I'm, Laura, let me finish. This was a change that happened after trustee Santoro's hearing. And I remember the board voting whether to pay trustee Santoro's bills because at the time, there was no requirement that they pay trustee Santoro's bills.
But the requirement had been put on. I'm sorry.
The difference, the difference here is that the board voted to pay trustee Santoro's bill to sue the village. Not to defend himself, but to sue the village.
I'm going to ask, you guys, let me finish. Two of you interrupted me that time. The law was changed after that for administrative hearings. So this does not go back to SUSE. This goes back to Norman. So that, that's really where the discussion should begin. But that being said, I, you know, I can see we're not getting anywhere here. I'm going to write to the controller and ask him his opinion. I'll share my email with you. The next item on the agenda.
Wait, I'm raising my hand, please. What, Victor? Just to clarify, because it's very important to know the real, the extension of the indemnification to the, to the, to the volunteers was passed October 6th, 1978. Mayor Open, Oppenheimer read the definition for the term officer and employee. She also noted that this term includes the mayor and the board of trustees and that any elected official shall receive a salary and compensation. This term also includes members of boards and committees operating out of the jurisdiction of the village of Maran. That's what she was saying. And they explained that the village doesn't recognize all the hours of all those commissioners. So essentially, if you want to, this, this law then was amended to extend to administrative hearings, including those in the village. That is correct. But if you want to change this entire section, it would have tremendous repercussions. So it's not an easy task. Then you would have to single for this proceeding, you cap it, for this one, yes, for this one, no. This could involve any decision made here or by any board. And I'll also say something to finalize this, that I, I come from Latin America where, where unfortunately, at some point, all this board, planning board and zoning board decisions became too political and never gone back to the, to the, to the, to the time where you do it, we do it here in the, like in the U.S. where it's volunteer residents that spend hours and hours. And what they get instead is, is to the satisfaction of doing it and, and, and the, and the, and the assurance that if they're going to get into trouble, a legitimate, a legitimate dispute, that precisely in this case is in the courts, whether you take one side or the other, whatever you think. I won't say, I should not, will not. But that, that, that is, that is what, that is the largest, largest issue, which is, are you going to defend those volunteer boards? And I think the answer was in 1978, yes. Then we'd expanded it, but if we want to, if we're going to mess with this, it is really, it's really, really careful. I think we better go to the root, root cause of this, which is clean the code, make sure our proceedings are better, make sure that there are possibilities of fixing issues or clarifying issues before they get so far and, and become costly and, and they don't come in the middle of a pandemic where it took several, several months. And that's why it's all, all this litigation happened. So let, let's just leave it there for now and we'll revisit it, of course. We're all concerned about this. We're going to work in litigation. We're going to work in controlling costs overall. But this is just, this, this is not, this has never been abused, in my view. And if, if the mayor insists on that, he'll have to substantiate or take, take the measures that he thinks are appropriate. But not changing our code this way to, to just.
I, I, I disagree. That would be a monumental task to change the amount that this is capped at. I think that that's not true. Well, the next item on the agenda is front yard garbage collection. We have three minutes, but it's on to set a, a public hearing to discuss on a regular board meeting. Mambo from Mr. Barbario.
One comment.
No concerns about it?
I don't, I don't see, I don't see the discussion we had on, on senior citizens over 17 that I raised. Our manager agreed with, with, with adding it and I don't see it.
I remember that discussion, Victor, and I think we were going to try to add, you know, that, I, I think, you know, it was where, where no one was under 70 in the household. So if we want to add that, you know, upon proof in the form of a note from a treating physician, you know, or where no resident in the household is under the age of 70. That, that might make sense.
Yeah, I think we can incorporate that into the PLL, which will be on an agenda to set a public hearing.
But tonight?
Uh, so I don't believe it's on to set the public hearing tonight. It'll be, uh, is it, or it is? So we can.
That's why I'm raising it.
Okay.
I, I'll try to come up with an amendment while you're doing other things.
So Bob, will you work on that?
I'll try to come up with an amendment while you're doing other business tonight.
Thank you very much. All right.
Excuse me, Bob, while you're doing that, you need to be careful that we just don't say under 70 because there are people, you know, there are situations where there are people that are 70 or older that are taken care of. Very young children that wouldn't be able to move the cans out. So, so where there is an issue, I think is what we're trying to get to.
So I'm, that one, I'm not sure how I can phrase. I, I understand, but I'll leave that to your legal expert to figure it out.
Well, I think, I think in that situation, they could apply for a medical exception and say, you know, while I don't qualify, while I have three-year-olds in the house and I'm 75, you know, I, I'm not able to care for the three-year-old and take the garbage out, if that's the medical issue.
Oh, but you could, you could have a six-year-old and they, they can't do that either. So I just, I just think, I mean, I know of situations where that is taking place right now. Yeah, I didn't think about it until you, you know, you came up with that, but that's what I'm, so I think we have to build in a escape valve and I agree with that. But I think we need to be careful of how, that we don't shut doors on people that shouldn't have doors shut on them.
Right, maybe the letter that they send to the village manager to get an exception can set forth their circumstances.
That, that's fine, but that's why I say I'll leave it to Bob to try and figure it out. I don't necessarily think it has to be a medical exception.
How about if we said no adults under the age of 70? Would that work?
How about able-bodied adults under the age of 70?
We already have a physical ability portion of this.
Okay.
Right.
We're saying, with this, what I think I hear, I'm hearing is, even if a 71-year-old is physically capable of bringing the garbage to the front, he or she doesn't have to.
I think that was Victor's suggestion and I think that's fine. I don't know how everyone else feels.
That's not me. All right. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second. I.
Right. I'll see you back in about 15 minutes.
All right, thank you. He's in the restroom.
Okay.
Okay.
Dan?
Yeah?
Yeah? Can you hear me now? It's Nora.
Yes, I can. Yeah.
Is, is it very, is it very staticky now?
No, it's not. I, I, we'll see. Hopefully it, uh, it, uh, you know, stays like this, but.
Okay.
The reason I think it was yours is it was just at one point at which Cliff muted everyone.
Okay. Well, I'll just keep myself on mute except when I'm speaking. I think that's the plan. I can't hook, I can't hook up to my headset. I can only, I can't cut the system. I can only hook up to my webcam, so. We'll see. I do, we do have a pretty geeky household. All right, I had to put myself on mute. Okay.
Okay.
Video. Nelson? Kelly, Victor's on. Sally Roberts.
Sally, I sent you an email.
I sounded, Dan, I just answered you.
I'm gonna keep my microphone on mute, cuz Dan thinks I might be a, a, like a static or feedback problem, so.
Okay. Let me get my book. All right. Things all here. Okay, good evening. And welcome to the Village of Ameren Board of Trustees Regular Session. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible, with liberty.
Justice.
Justice. For.
Good evening. It says notice of exits, but I believe you all know what the exits are in your house. First item on the agenda is opening of the meeting. I need a motion to open this meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I just have it. The first item on the agenda is communication to the board. I see Mr. Tippett is the first out of the gate.
Good evening, board members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um. Quickly. We are fast approaching the spring, summer. We are fast approaching the spring summer season. I am assuming that we probably aren't going to have any kind of Memorial Day or St. Patrick's Day parade. What is the status with the Fireman's Carnival? What is the status of a day camp? My thought on the day camp is fairly simple. Um, you could wait as late as April 1st, but if children aren't immunized by May 1st, you simply can't hold a camp for the, uh, the possibility of a spread. Basically, the way the school systems have been working is if somebody gets it, they isolate them. They isolate anybody they've had contact with. And unfortunately, you can't do camp remotely. So, um, I think that if you haven't already canceled camp, you have to have that as a, as a caveat. Um, or, you know, because if you did have an outbreak at camp, are you going to return the money to the people? Most of the councils, you'd lose their parents, wouldn't let them come back. So I would, I would just put, if you are looking to advertise camp, a caveat that if children can't get immunization by May 1st and they're not, they don't have their first shot by June 1st, there's just no possibility of having that many children in that close proximity in a summer camp situation. Uh, parking on Boston Post Road at this point, especially with your finances, you certainly do need it. Uh, I would make one change, both to Mamaroneck Avenue and Boston Post Road. I would start the parking at 10:00 AM. There is nobody parking on Mamaroneck Avenue where the meters are between eight and 10:00 in the morning. Most of the businesses aren't even opened yet. If you went to 10 o'clock, you would at least be giving the people who live in the apartments an opportunity to have a normal morning. And unfortunately, you know, from 10:00 to 6:00, there has to be meters. You cannot put an exemption in for the apartment owners only. And if you left those spots open, they would simply be taken up by either the high school kids or the people at Harbor Island. So those are my two suggestions. And, uh, I will be having some comment of abstract of the bills and such. So just pay attention to my hand. Thank you.
Glenn, thank you very much for your comments, I think, regarding the camp and the, um, other parades. I think those are, you know, very good suggestion. The St. Patty's Day Parade, what we received notice today that they are canceling this year's parade and asking for 2022. So we're, we're very conscious of it and very concerned about what's happening in the spread and being safe and protective and proactive.
Just so people watching know, the day camp, we will be following all the suggestions and approvals of Westchester County Department of Health. And we will, you know, follow closely the CDC wishes that headlines. Next up is Daria.
And one, one quick comment there. It, it, I agree, it's a serious issue with, with the camp. It's complicated issue because actually the vaccines are not, are not approved for, 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 uh, younger people under 14 or under 16. So each, each vaccine is different. So this is going to be very complicated.
That, that's why we leave it to the Department of Health. Daria.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Just so folks know, there's a five minute time limit on public comment. But yes, we can hear you, Derek.
All right, great. Um, I just wanted to ask if you could update us on the status of the village hiring a new attorney?
Derek, can you repeat that?
Sorry, um, can you update us on the status of the village hiring a new attorney?
We, we are putting out an advertisement to hire a full-time village attorney who works for the, directly for the village of Ameri. That's the status.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Ms. Saul.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for performing your civic duty so well and carefully. We appreciate that. You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I sit on the Police Reform and Reenvisioning Committee, which was, I think, originally, not originally, at some point we were told that we would be presenting to the board this evening during the work session. You got a very brief report from Mayor Murphy and it was put over for February 1st in a special session. And then Mr. Tefor said, well, I believe it was Victor, that we should get ready to go as soon as those recommendations come in because we have to report to the governor by the 31st. Was that correct? Was that, was that you, Victor? I think so. Unless it was.
What I said was that we need a, we, we need a full plan. We need a full plan before us. Let me clarify before we go too far since you. When I look, when I look at the executive order, it reads at some point, "Such plan shall be offered for public comment to all citizens in the locality and after consideration of such comment shall be presented to the legislative body of the political subdivision. We shall ratify or adopt such plan by local law resolutions appropriate no later on April 1st, 2021."
I wasn't going to hold you exactly to your words. I just would like.
I was going to say, so I was going to say is that it refers about a plan. So I, I just want to make sure that we are, we're, we're getting the recommendations and the plan together soon. So we can start looking at it because actually before that, that's where the executive order talks about the committee that you're working on, all the other pieces that have to be put together. So, so that, that's all I, that, that, that was the purpose of my comment.
Okay, Ms. Saul.
I would like to say that, um, there were a couple of decisions handed down to the members of the committee indicating how things were going to be. And it was that we would split into smaller groups and that those groups would come up with recommendations subject to their topics. And the topics were civilian, something like civilian oversight or oversight, training, anti-crime and others. And then we were told that we have to submit our top four recommendations to the village manager for presentation to the board. But I believe, my understanding, and I think most of the committee's understanding, was that we would go into plenary, plenary session to discuss each subcommittee's recommendations because otherwise we are not bringing you the committee's recommendations. We are bringing you a subcommittee of three or four people's recommendations would have never been discussed by the committee as a whole. And we don't have any more scheduled committee meetings so that there, unless we change something, there will not be a larger discussion on those issues. And further, we were not told ahead of time that only four of our recommendations would be taken and presented to the board. And I asked, well, what about five through 10? And then he said, well, you, you have to just pick the top four. But I don't think when it comes to anti-bias training and examining ourselves as a village and as a police department, which is what the governor has required of us, a random number of four suggestions for each subcommittee is necessarily an appropriate number. I know the county, which has bigger issues than we do, but they just voted on 40 recommendations. And I think to rush it to you with only, is it 12 or 16 recommendations that have never been discussed beyond the smaller groups seems to me a short shrift to a grand undertaking, which has a lot of potential for positive change.
All right, uh, just, just to clarify, it was my understanding that we were asking for priorities before, but I, I remember distinctly saying, if you had more than four, send them in, but prioritize them. So, you know, this is something that we could take up with Jerry tomorrow, but I appreciate you bringing it to us.
Okay, I also, um, want to add that we got 19 responses in Spanish, which is woefully low considering that 25% of the village are, is made up of Hispanic people, not necessarily Spanish speaking. But, um, and those were not translated into English. So the population in part that we are seeking most to protect, in fact, is not only terribly underrepresented, but not even being counted in terms of the greater population and their voices are not being heard. And, um, finally, uh, I believe we need ongoing oversight because many of the recommendations are prospective, such as training for officers in the future and the possibility of a dashboard, which would show the number of arrests, the number of.
Ms. Saul, I'm sorry. Well, up and, and I, I will share your email with the board.
Oh, thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. Everyone, have a good night. Thanks.
Kevin Duarte Chan. Kevin?
Hi, everyone, good evening. My, people hear me?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Thank you for having me again. Tonight, I do not have a question, just a small announcement I would like to make to the board as well as to fellow residents who are listening in. So as I'm sure that some of folks are aware in this meeting by now, I am beginning to help create a group called the Mamaroneck Taxpayer Watch Dogs. And I'm doing so because I am concerned about the excessive legal spending that we are doing. This spending comes at a time when many residents of Mamaroneck are hit hard by the pandemic, including many essential workers who do not qualify for any kind of government assistance and are largely left to fend for themselves. Uh, I would like to invite everyone listening in tonight, including our village officials, to follow the Taxpayer Watch Dogs Facebook page and website as we welcome dialogue from different stakeholders and neighbors in the pursuit of government transparency. We are passionate about restoring the people's faith that the government in fact works for them. And we want nothing more than to restore that trust by showing that our village officials are acting in the interests of all residents and not just a select few on the basis of wealth. Thank you. That is all for me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Mr. Queros.
Glenn Wurley.
unmute yourself, Mr. Queros.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, um, I'm calling first of all because.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Queros, could, could you speak up a little louder? It's kind of hard to hear you.
Okay. Can you, is this loud enough?
It's better.
Okay, I'm calling, uh, first of all, Mr. Murphy, I'd like to see you. You're, you're like a dot on the table in the screen. And I think people should be able to either change where you're sitting or go, uh, because I think people should be able to see the person most responsible for elevating the legal fees in this village, creating a, a half and half not environment. So if you could sit someplace else, I would appreciate it. But you're, you're a dot now and I want the village to see your face as you walk around. Because you're making the village very unaffordable for a lot of good people. I, uh, I applaud the last two speakers who spoke, uh, the, the lady who spoke about the police action. As you all know, um, the village, and I'm suing the village for significant dollars for the police department and you, Mr. Murphy, and, and the board. And I, I, you, your, your tactics will be visible as the depositions continue. But it is a, it is a joke. It is sadly a, a dysfunction of what is happening, uh, in the village. And you're mostly responsible as you make sure that the rich people are the most important people in the village. And this police department has to be dissolved by its leadership. People without the education, people without the concern. It is sad that you wouldn't even consider a person in charge of the police department who's unqualified herself to, uh, to even understand what the social economics and race of this village is. And I look forward to, uh, to the depositions and what's going on. And you should check your ego in, in the village and, and the rest of the, the board that I'm looking at. You will not win this, Mr. Murphy. The village, the police department will not win this, not in today's environment. And what you're doing to the, to the very middle class and poor people of this village. I'm on you and I'm going after you with everything I've got.
Okey dokey. I just want to point out, the last speaker disparaged of police chief. Uh, I don't really care what they say about me. Our police chief is doing a great job. She's only been in the office a short amount of time. And, you know, we, we all support her and commend her for the work she's doing. You know, people who have litigation, active against the village, have their own point of view and they're welcome to that point of view. And they're welcome to their point of view about me. But I, I'm not going to sit here anymore and let people attack the employees of the Village of Ameri. Next is Mr. Salanitro.
Good evening. Quick and easy question I have, maybe staff could help me. I'm having a tough time navigating the village website. I remember for quite a while, we used to have a dropdown tab on the website for litigation. And in that litigation dropdown, there was, uh, information about ongoing, uh, cases. That's no longer available. I don't, I can't see it, not sure who would have taken it down. It was, it was a great tool for the residents to view as a level of trans, transparency. So, um, can we get that back? Not sure why it's not there.
I, I, I think, yeah, I think that, that, uh, the more people can understand what's going on, the better off we are.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I'm not affiliated with any of the speakers that have previously spoken, but, um, I was curious because there is a lot of, um, news out there. And I was curious about the lawsuits and various litigation. And having had, uh, personal experience about it, I know that many civic-minded residents years ago pushed the village hard to develop transparency on these issues. And the village did a great job. They had, um, they had that link. I think Dan Sarnoff should know, Sally definitely remembers this. And it was updated regularly. So as, as litigation was presented to the village on either side, the, the documents were online, PDF. Any, any information that came in from the court, any information that came in from, you know, either side of the litigation was posted. So that, you know, the, the residents were apprised of the ongoing, uh, matters. So I really encourage the village to continue that. Again, maybe it'd be interesting to find out why it's not there anymore. It's an.
I, I don't know offhand why it's not there, but, but I would support putting it back up.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do know that there is a link in, on the, um, for lawsuits and decisions that are, uh, on the village website. But you have to go, instead of being on the main menu, you have to go to the attorney's webpage, what, what page, if you will. And then you have lawsuits and decisions.
You know, we can make it more.
It doesn't have all the most current things though, looking at it.
We can make more prominent, we can make it more prominent on, so you wouldn't have such difficulty looking.
Yeah, I have some old samples. I have some old samples of what the website looks like. I'd be happy to help with that.
Thank you.
I just found it and it is under the village attorney, um, but it's not very current.
Yeah.
We'll try and get an update and we'll get it in a more prominent position.
Great, I appreciate it. Thank you, just help everybody. I appreciate it. Have a great.
Good suggestion, buddy. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dan.
Night, buddy. All right, that's it for, uh, public comment. Item on the agenda. This isn't a scheduled public hearing, this is to have a public hearing. Right?
We scheduled it last time.
We scheduled it the last, it says on my, my paper, you have scheduled. This is a public hearing on permit parking areas. I'm going to ask the clerk treasurer to unmask for a second and explain this to the audience.
This is a consolidation of general parking.
This is a consolidation of general parking permits. Uh, we will no longer sell RP Regatta Parking, Continental View, Overnight Parking, GP Overnight, uh, twenty-four a day parking, or GPI General Parking Industrial. There will be one permit for all lots in the village, and that will be a GP permit. This permit will allow.
There'll be railroad tip.
That's the call.
Okay, that's the call. I'm sorry. I'm in Russia. I'm sorry.
This permit will also uh will allow parking twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week in any village parking lot. This permit uh year will run from June first to May thirty-first. We will continue to sell resident railroad and non-resident railroad permits. We would also like to keep the permits for our municipal employees, which are M for municipal for one sixty-nine mile Pleasant Avenue and RF for Regatta Municipal. These permits run from March first to February twenty-eighth. Fees will also be raised by resolution this evening. Item four E.
Okay. Uh, with that.
Sally Roberts did a lot of work on.
Yes, Sally did do a lot of work, and and uh this has to be done by February first so that we can send out and charge people to, you know, and and make it easier on staff, easier on the customers. Uh, I need a motion to open this public here.
So moved.
Back it in.
Okay, call roll.
Trustee Winter?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh, okay. Any comment or concerns from the board trustees?
A a comment that I want to make that was clarified earlier in the work session. Uh, the these permits, the general permits are uh et cetera are going to be um twenty-four hours a day, six days a week, uh, Monday through Saturday, not including Sunday.
That's correct. Yep. Anybody else?
For the consolidation, I think we've been waiting for this, and I hope it works for everybody.
Yeah, I think it's I think it's a smart move. The simpler is always the better. Uh, anybody else on the board before I go to public?
No, I think it'll I think it will be easier, and I think it will be clearer, and anything we can do to make current times easier and clearer is fine with me.
Great.
Bravo. That's that's exactly right.
Go to Mr. Tippett. Glenn, you had your head up? Unmute yourself, Glenn. It's the Tippett?
Uh, no, no, I don't have my hand up on the parking issue. Sorry.
Okay. All right. So then there are no public comment. Uh, I would intend a motion to close the public here.
So moved.
Second.
Augustino.
Trustee is Winter?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh, now I need a motion to adopt law law A.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Uh, Augustino?
Trustee is Winter?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Thank you. And Gus is law made.
I have a question, then. This means we we can now update the the parking app? Would would that change now? So we've thought.
The pardon, the parking app deals more with the meter parking, uh, not really the permit parking.
You have a permit parking you're allowed to to use those spaces, right?
Metered spaces? The only I think the only thing we allow is if there's overflow, we allow people to park at uh meter spaces in the hunter lot. Uh, but the 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 fact that the permit is visible on the vehicle is, you know, the cue that the PEOs need to understand that the car is parked there illegally.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm sorry, we we need a motion.
No, we adopted it.
What? We have, okay, good. Thank you. God, you're here, Ogie. What do I do? Uh, the the next item is two A, uh, budget amendment to fund allocated insurance budget. Uh, Dan, you wrote a nice little uh, you know, Ogie wrote a nice little uh memo here. Uh, basically, uh, there have been deductibles that we had unanticipated in insurance claims. Is that correct, Ogie?
Um, yes, the insurance claims that come in, they give us a choice uh for an additional X amount. You get an additional ten percent extra insurance. However, we budgeted for the standard price, so we advised um that we should stay within the budget and follow the claims that we budgeted for. This resolution is to fix the three invoices that have been paid already in excess of what was properly adopted.
Okay.
Also, if I can finish, I'm sorry. Our claims in the on account insurance have given rise to more than what we anticipated. We budgeted thirty thousand dollars, and we had several accidents that brought us over the thirty thousand dollars. One was for a car accident was fifty thousand, and another one was thirty thousand. That alone pretty much ate up most of a hundred and twenty thousand. The other remainder of the hundred and twenty thousand is for flooded policies that were in excess of what we originally anticipated.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or concerns?
So, Ogie, are you saying that the the additional premiums, we're not getting additional insurance, we're just covering basically the losses that we've had?
The hundred and twenty thousand is composed of two components. One is for flood insurance, and the other is for claims against the village that we have to pay, that the insurance negotiates. Those claims we budgeted thirty thousand. We wanted to pay like close to ninety thousand for those claims, and we're projecting from now until the end of the year, there's going to be at least another fifty to sixty thousand. We're hoping that this hundred and twenty thousand gets us through May.
Understand.
As I make a motion?
So moved. Second.
Augustino?
Trustee is Winter?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh, the next item on the agenda is order of vouchers, attractive vouchers, and tonight's uh grand total is one million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, forty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Have any questions or concerns? I have one. Uh, Ogie on page six, McCarthy finger, uh, another two thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents uh for Mr. Teagarden's article seventy-eight against the village. I think that brings us up to about six thousand for that. Uh, do we know, Bob, do you know if that's fully, Bob Spalzino?
Yes, I'm here, mayor.
Here. Do you know if that's now fully submitted?
Um, part of the last I spoke with um the folks at McCarthy finger, it was not. Their response was due sometime in early February, if I recall correctly.
Because there might be more coming in on that.
Correct. Yeah, we, uh, Mr. Mayor, we've been in the process of transferring the record from that the village has to uh McCarthy finger. I believe they have everything at this point from us, but uh I can clarify that and verify that tomorrow.
Would you please do that then?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll just point out on that, Tom, though, that the that McCarthy finger hourly rate is only two hundred and forty-five dollars an hour, which is lower than our new rate or um what we're talking about. So I mean, it's been a relative bargain.
Okay. Uh, we have Mr. Tippett.
Yes, um, Department nineteen eighty-four refund on real property tax. Those were sorceresses uh from Rinek. They are all from two thousand twelve to two thousand fourteen. Have we paid the balance that is actually being defended by the town of Rye yet, or are we still going to get that bill? In other words, we had to defend everything up to two thousand fourteen. The actual settlements in some cases go two or three more years. I would assume that when we settled, the town settled, in fact, it shows top of the ridge settled uh through two thousand seventeen, which means there's got to be additional rebates. Have we already paid those, or are they coming in the near future?
Ogie, do you know the answer to that question? Yes, the town of Rye, the town of Rye has several tax, has various taxes from the Rinek community, a portion of the Village of America. Apparently, they're all being reviewed, and the prizes are going to them. But each person who are we differs in the number of years we took to our differences based on how they were filed. We are monitoring it, and the town of Rye gives us quarterly updates on where we are with these.
I guess, I guess, Ogie, the question turn translates to, how much more are we anticipating within the next eighteen months uh in uh of cases that have already been litigated and that we will be uh on the hook for?
I could provide you a spreadsheet of all those cases. Uh, they're projecting close to three hundred thousand the next year.
That our share would be three hundred thousand?
The next year, or what they feel they're going to settle.
Yeah, that that includes, but what what we have some that are going to be due this year because we settled three cases that we paid our portion of. My question is, when are we going to get the bill for Rye, Rye Town's portion? Because they settled at the same time as us. We had split years. Top of the Ridge had three years with us, and I think they had two years with with Rye. That whole thing was settled. There's ten thousand dollars that has to be charged back to the Village of America through Rye's settlement, not our settlement. All the settlements that were on this uh on this were up to two thousand fourteen, which means we still have to get Rye's. Have we already paid what what uh Rye settled their portion of the same uh real property tax rebates? In other words, let's say, let's say, Top of the Ridge is the easiest one. They got two thousand twelve to two thousand seventeen, sixteen. We already paid two thousand twelve to two thousand fourteen with this sorcery. The rest of the sorcery, because we gave up our excessor, is now handled and settled by the town of Rye. Have we already paid that portion, or is that portion going to be coming probably within the next month? Because that is settled. It's about when we're paying it, or have we already paid it?
The answer is he doesn't have the information in front of him right now. Uh, just so the folks at home understand, the Village of America stopped being assessing unit in twenty fourteen, as Mr. Tippett pointed out. So we we have engaged uh Paul Burger and Stout to handle the sorcerers uh from two thousand fourteen back. Everything from two thousand and fourteen forward, except for the town of America and the town of Rye, is settled and handled by the uh village attorney or the town attorneys in those two municipalities. Uh, so we are then required to pay uh, you know, what the settlement or portion we did. Uh, I've never seen uh a situation where uh, you know, that there was a divergence between what the town did itself, but anyway, so it was a smart move when they did it in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, I I, as I pointed out, I don't think Ogie has this information in front of him. That's a question that's better uh for budget time than abstract the uh voucher.
Okay. So, Ogie. One other question. Um, Public Works Administration, we had last meeting a charge of a hundred and ninety-nine thousand for dump trucks. This meeting, we have two hundred and sixty-four nine thirteen for two dump trucks. Is that four dump trucks? Is it two dump trucks? We paid for one meeting, one last meeting, one this meeting, or is it an update on what we paid for the two dump trucks?
I think it says the invoice, we'll pay the invoice based on the delivery and acceptance of the vehicle. So if, you know, one vehicle gets delivered, you know, one week, and the other one comes a couple of weeks later, they'll be on different abstracts.
Right.
Okay, so then we actually paid uh for the two trucks approximately four hundred and sixty thousand.
I think I think the confusion here is that the board approved purchasing the trucks two weeks ago. That wasn't on the abstract. It was it was it was a resolution. The board approved the purchase of the truck, and how the bill comes to do. We 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 gave our our staff the ability to go out and buy it. They bought it. Now here's the bill. That's what's confusing.
Yeah.
So I I.
My question is, is it two different trucks? Is there one truck for one ninety-nine and another truck for two forty-six, or is it two vehicles for one ninety-nine, or is it two vehicles for two forty-six?
Dan, do you have any answers?
Um, I, if we put, if we bought from the same vendor, it would be on the purchase order. Uh, the I'd have to look at the original purchase order, but it would denote uh what was being purchased because it would have the uh board resolution attached to it. Uh, I can uh look in the uh look, try and look in KVS real quickly. Uh, do you uh do you know the vendor on the uh?
Mayor, can I ask a question?
This Roberts has some clarification here.
I think. Glenn, are you talking about the resolution tonight for D correcting the previously adopted budget transfer?
Abstract of the bills, um, cap cap capital spending, you have two dump trucks. Um.
Glenn, what page, Glenn?
Thirty-five, thirty-five.
Uh, thi- this date, and then last meeting, you also had two dump trucks for one ninety-nine. I'm wondering, is it an update of last, or are we getting four trucks? That's what I'm confused with. You had an abstract of the bills, capital projects for one nine for one ninety-nine, the last meeting, right? Charge to the Public Works Administration line. This this meeting, you have one under um fourteen ninety, capital two hundred and sixty-four thousand nine thirteen for two dump trucks. Did you simply the trucks given more expenses? Is it one truck for one meeting, one truck for the other? That's what I'm confused about. Is is the grand total four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, or is the grand total of the trucks two hundred and sixty-four dollars, or the grand total of the trucks one ninety-nine?
So the the first, the two forty-six was for a new Mack Granite uh truck. Uh, actually, I seem to recall as we bought two trucks, I think the board authorized the purchase uh maybe about six months ago. Uh, but yeah, these are, these are two, these are two trucks. Uh, I'm looking at description now. Uh, yeah, we we purchased one new you new Mack Granite forty-four uh FCR, uh, one from Chevrolet of Wat- uh Watsonville. So the original approval, I believe, was for two two trucks, and we're paying them on two separate vouchers, one each. Does that answer the question?
All right.
Dan, I think the question is, are there two trucks or four trucks?
Two trucks.
Two trucks. All right, that's the answer.
And what's the cost of each truck?
What you just said it was, Glenn.
One ninety-nine, two sixty-four.
Yes.
We are, okay.
Thank you.
That, that answers my question.
Thank you. Uh, I need a motion to accept the order of bills. If there aren't any more questions.
So moved.
I'll second. Will you call the roll?
Trustee, is Winchup?
Yes.
Patches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, thank you.
Dan, it would be helpful if you could get our clarification when you can get to it, just to make sure that they're two trucks or four trucks.
Okay, um, sure, I can, I mean, I'll uh, I'll see if I can send out the two separate vouchers to the board, just.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is a four A resolution accepting donation from the Renification Center. Uh, this is a donation from Miss Karen Puckwall. And Miss Puckwall is donating on behalf of her friend Matt. And Matt and Karen became friends at a beach cleanup. And they are donating uh to uh buy those uh pick up things that they use to pick up the garbage on the beach. Uh, so that they can have more of them and older ones, and we appreciate their donation. We appreciate their volunteerism. Uh, a lot of people suck stuff, and some people do stuff about stuff, so I appreciate it. I'll make the motion that we accept that donation.
So, hold on a second.
Will we see the call?
Trustee, is Winchup?
Yes, what a great, what a great tale.
Patches?
Yes.
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh. The next item on the agenda is four B resolution, accepting justice court order. Uh. Just want to talk a little bit about the order.
Absolutely, at annual bait. At an annual basis, the justice court is required to have an independent audit done of their financials. So, Curtis Davies did the audit as of May thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Um, have an unqualified opinion, which is a good opinion. Um. However, they were unable to account for certain differences, which they noted in their financials. Um, that, that's it. Now, in accordance to the justice court's uh law, we have to have file resolution with the board, letting them know that the search order was done as noted in the resolution. Twenty nineteen, the Uniform Court of Acts requires that the justice court any provide their court records and documents to the respective village board, and the search records then be examined or audited, and the facts be entered into the amendment to the border proceeding. So these are the audit statements that that was done in accordance to that section of the law.
Are there questions or concerns?
Overproven.
Uh, Mr. Tippett has a stand-up. No, I guess he took it down, or is it off?
No, it's up again.
Glenn, is your hand up or down?
Up. Uh, for the uh justice court audit, I just want everybody to uh take notice that the uh bail is much less than it's been. Uh, I told you that this is New York State's new policy about no bail, and that the uh amount of bail that we are gonna be receiving as a village, therefore is gonna be much less, and the audit report actually reflects that. Thank you.
I just want to point out that jail, a bail is not supposed to be uh a punitive fee. It's just to, to make sure people come to court. Uh, so it, it, it shouldn't be looked on as a revenue generator. It's, it's just a guarantee appearance. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Take a motion?
So moved. Second.
Augustino?
Trustee, Winchup?
Yes.
Patches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh, I'm uh for C, Resolutions Governor of Public Hearing, PLK, twenty twenty, what you're garbage pickup. Uh, since the pandemic uh has taken hold, the village, the town, uh, a lot of communities have uh required folks uh to bring the garbage out to curb, which is really commonplace in most municipalities. Uh, it's been working pretty well, uh, doing it, uh, saves us money. Uh, it saves uh injuries to workers, uh, going behind and, and the side of houses. Uh, and it, it, it's environmentally friendly because trucks do not have to idle as long. So it, it, it's good in a lot of ways. So we proposed this law, which we will discuss uh in a resolution. Uh, the date is January twenty-fifth, which is obviously wrong. Uh, so we want to make this February eighth, I believe, is the first board meeting.
Well, before we proceed with this, Bob was going to try and.
I just want to get the date of the resolution before we start. Okay? Uh, as Bob's talking about the law, this is the scheduling. Uh, would you like to schedule it for February eighth? Does that sound good to everybody?
Yes.
Sally, is that enough time to advertise?
It should be, Bob. We just, if we get it in tomorrow, we just need three days.
Okay.
All right, uh, in work session, we talked about uh slight amendments to the law, uh, which uh having to do with exempting people uh over seventy, and also for folks uh who are incapacitated and who uh obviously cannot uh wheel the can down to the curb. So Bob, you have that language?
I have a suggestion, Mayor. The uh, the sentence that's highlighted because it's an addition that um begins upon proof in the form of
Okay.
Right in the middle of two dash two hundred dash four E, versus upon proof in the form of my suggestion is that that sentence be amended to read as follows. The village manager may exempt from this requirement any residents in which there are no adults under the age of seventy, or there is no resident physically able to bring the refuse containers to the curb.
I think that reflects what we discussed. Thank you, Bob.
You're removing the piece of, of the note from addition, you know, from a decision?
I think, I, I think because it says the village manager may exempt, I think that allows the village manager requires such proof as he deems appropriate, or she deems appropriate in the future.
Doesn't this make it clear, kind of clear what, what the requirement is instead of any other? This is how it's working in now, right?
I, I don't know how it's working.
That's how it's working now.
Yeah, I, I, I think it gives clarity to, to that it's medical or the senior, the senior amendment that I proposed.
Okay, let, let's.
I think you should keep it because it's, it's not arbitrary, so it's just clear why.
So let, let's say that sentence again with upon proof uh as the prefix.
Well, the problem is it doesn't work the way I've written it as a prefix. So, let me try this. The village manager may exempt from this requirement any residents in which there are no resident adults under the age of seventy, or there is no resident comma upon proof in the form of a note from a treating physician comma, able to bring the refuse containers to the curb. Is that better?
I think that works.
That does it. Thanks.
Totally, thank you.
That's a, that's, it's a solid double. Okay, with that amendment uh to this law, which will be posted tomorrow, uh, would anybody like to schedule a public hearing for February eighth?
So moved.
I'll second.
Will you please call a roll?
Trustee, Winchup?
Yes.
Patches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, next is uh for D, uh correcting adopted budget transfer. Uh, on January eleventh, the budget transfer was approved by a board of trustees to fund overtime and plan for traffic and leak removal, whereas there was a typo in a previous resolution incorrectly noting the budget line for traffic overtime was A. Uh, gives the number, and whereas the residents request, this is really just requesting uh that it, it be properly categorized. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, doesn't change the amount that was transferred, and it doesn't require us to transfer more money. This is just dotting the i's across the piece. Thank you. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Okay.
Well, what, traffic control overtime is what?
What?
Traffic control overtime is what?
That's when like Con Ed uh i- is, is doing a job, you'll see that's going on now to replacing the gas. Uh, and you have peak uh the police out there.
So is that reimbursable or not?
Yes.
You know, I just am concerned about taking stuff out of the snow removal, particularly that we may or may not have
Already done this.
The next twenty-four hours.
And we, we've already moved the money. This is just uh putting, putting it in the right label. That's what the resolution is talking about. The money has already been moved. There, there was a typo in the past resolution that fixes the typo. Does anybody have any questions or concerns other than that? All right, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Will you?
Trustee, Winchup?
Yes.
Patches?
Oh, yes, but I'm very bothered if I hear that this is moved, this is, money's been moved prior to being authorized.
No, Dan, you, you're not understanding. The, the, this was approved before. They had the category, the number from, from which it was taken, not the amount, the place it was taken, they had a, a typo. This is correcting the budget to which department it's coming out. It's, it's clear in the resolution. Resolution updating chapter three forty-seven fees of the village of Amerenik in regard to parking permits.
Did everyone else vote on that?
What?
No, on that last one, we need to finish.
Trustee, Lucas?
Yes.
My bad.
Trustee to four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh, resolution adopting fees and charges to parking permits. Uh, this was discussed in work session a couple of uh weeks ago. Uh, it goes in tandem uh with the law that was just passed. Uh, there are some slight increases, but there, there's a larger increase for non-resident railroad uh bringing us more in line uh with our neighboring communities. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
No, glad we're getting this done. Same.
Sally will be happy. And Sally, thank you for your work. You really worked hard with that.
You're welcome.
Hopefully, it'll be easier in the, in the, now that you got all this work done. It'll be easier on a day-to-day basis.
Somebody wish to make a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Will you?
Trustee, Winchup?
Yes.
Patches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh, next item is four F certificate, certification, certification of unpaid taxes for fiscal year, one of the for fiscal year uh twenty twenty-one. Uh, we, the underside, being members of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Amerenik, do hereby certify that we have compared annexed account of unpaid taxes for the fiscal year commencing June first, twenty twenty, and ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, with the original rule, which tax laws, the set plans have been transcribed, and we do hereby certify that we find the accounts to be correct. Questions or concerns?
Yep.
Uh, just so you know, this is something uh that actually has to be signed by each and every one of us. So uh, you don't have to make arrangements uh with clerk treasurer staff, or, or, you know, talk to Sally, give it as a way to do it, uh, where you can do it without actually coming in and uh you know, uh, having, you know, having to go out. Uh. I need a motion?
So moved. I'll second. Take your pick. But Ogie's not there.
The clerk treasurer just had to go out. I'm gonna call the roll.
Okay.
Uh, Loppe, back in the nick of time, this guy, he never misses a roll.
Trustee, Winchup?
Yes.
Patches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Hey, Sally, um, could, could we just sign the individual papers that we have and then mail them in? Can you have like five pages with all five signatures, or do you want them all on one sheet?
Ogie, what do you think? I don't think it would be a problem.
Go to the tall and sign one at a time? Or I can mail them out. When you mail it back, I'll mail it to somebody else.
So you want them all on one sheet?
Yes.
Okay.
I can meet you outside.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Thank you. I know, the, the least we go out, the better, but some things have to, the law is the law. Uh. Next item is a communication to the board. We have a round two. Just tip it again.
Go ahead, Glenn. You gonna let Glenn in? Glenn, I'm meeting.
There you go. Um. Ju- just to uh, the only reason I brought up the bail was for budgetary reasons. How the policy is, nothing to do, but whether it's bail, death certificates, divorce pay, whatever, we have a budget line that assumed X amount for bail, and we have to assume there's less money for budgetary purposes only. In your uh abstract work session, you uh, that's not on the agenda, but you had three police cars that you're looking to purchase for a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and then if you look down, you saw twenty-eight items on the agenda. Would that be the Scott Packs that were putting towards the um two hundred and fifty thousand dollar uh grant from uh safety from Otis?
I, I, I can answer that, Mr. Mayor. That was just a backup on the item. Uh, what I provided as backup was the information I provided to Assemblyman Otis's office uh back when this grant first came out. Uh, it's, it's solely the, the work session, I was solely for three police cars.
What was that?
The, what I provided as backup was the information that I provided to Assemblyman Otis's office back when the grant announcement first came out, which I believe was April over May last year. Uh, the item on the agenda is strictly for the three police vehicles.
Yeah, well, I, I, I saw that we had previously had Scott Packs and a fire chief's car. If you do the police cars at one fifty-five, the Scott Packs at thirty thousand, and the fire chief car at sixty-five thousand, that would add up to two fifty. That would be the grant. Is that what we're spending the money on?
Yes, but this item that was on the work session was a discrete item solely for the police vehicles. The village board also already authorized the purchase of the Scott Packs. And this was the police chief uh requesting that the village board approve the purchase of the three police vehicles.
Yeah, well, all I, all I want to know is if, if, if those are the three things that, that are, that are being used for the grant, that's fine.
Yeah.
It's simple.
Okay.
Um. The two trucks that we purchased was put in line fourteen ninety. Were they part of the uh bond that you pass, A, B, C? Were they part of the, uh, bond that you passed, A, B, C, D? Or does that have to be funded in the future?
Funded in the future. Yeah, it's going to be funded in the future.
Thank you. Um. Happy note. New York State has a. Um. Basically, if you, you, uh, lost money. You just simply go on New York State, you put in your name, and you look for lost money. Like if you put in Tom Murphy, you see that there's Tom Murphy money on Prospect Avenue. There's Tom Murphy money on Florence Avenue. Uh, Murphy Brothers has money on there. Go, go on tonight to the, uh, New York State. Uh, uh, controller's office. Type in your name, type in your dead relative's name. And like my grandmother's been do- do- dead for thirty years, and we found four checks from Bloomingdale's for, for. So, you, you, it's, it's amazing. They got billions of dollars, basically old insurance policy, old banks, uh. Anything, uh, but, uh, anybody can't get in contact with a check or something else, landlord rebates. Just type in, type in your last name, and if it's not you, maybe you get lucky, one of your relatives got some money. Uh, with that, um, the last thing is, uh, I also occasionally glance at other public meetings. And every single one of them has had a financial update. We are in very tough financial times, and I think that we need to start to get financial updates of exactly where we stand with the budget. Thank you.
We have a financial, a couple of financial updates. All right, and, uh, the proposed budget will be coming out soon. Thank you, Glenn. A little hands up. Uh. Report from the village manager?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yeah, you do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, file for the record, the agreement with Whitman, Osterman, and Hannah, LLP.
Okay. Report from clerk treasurer?
Yes, Mayor, we have a resignation of the Marine Education Center advising committee, Eddie Geiderman.
Thank Mr. Geiderman for his time and effort. Uh, hopefully he will be volunteering for another position with you. Report from the village attorney?
Uh, excuse me, local law number six has been filed with the Secretary of State, Mayor. That's the local law regarding the appointment of the clerk treasurer. Um, it becomes effective if it's approved at the referendum in November.
Thank you. Uh, minutes of commissions, boards, and committees, uh, the minutes of the board of trustees work session, the regular meetings of January eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Minutes of the zoning board of appeal meetings of January ninth and twenty-first, February. February sixth, March fifth, April second, May seventh, June fourth, July twenty-third, and August thirteenth, twenty twenty. They were that far behind. Minutes of the board of architecture review of December seventeenth, twenty twenty. Minutes of the board, minutes of the police reform and reinvention committee, meetings on December fifteenth, twenty twenty, and January fifth, twenty twenty-one. Uh. That being said, uh, I do extend a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll be late.
Thanks, everybody. Bye. Stay well, everyone.